Good evening and welcome to another meeting of the Rio Grande City Gruia Independent School District. This is Wednesday, August fourteenth of the year 2024 at six thirty at the multipurpose center hall. First of all, I want to welcome everybody. Everything became real quiet. It reminded me of a classroom. Nobody talking, but hey, we're doing good. At this time, let me have a meeting of a roll call, basically. Basilio Villarreal present. Jay Peña.
Present.
Eduardo Eri Ramirez.
Present.
Dr. Veronica Barrera.
Present.
Noi Castillo.
Present.
John Pope.
Present.
Ilizar Velazquez.
Present.
Okay, we do have a quorum at this time for Pledge of Allegiance by Ilizar invocation by John Pope.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pope.
If everybody can bow their heads. Dear God, thank you for bringing us together today. May you give us the wisdom and advice to make the right decisions. Bless this community. Bless everybody in this, in this district that we may continue moving this district forward and that God may bless us all. Thank you. Amen.
Mr. President, if I, if I may, Mr. President, before you continue with, with minutes, I think it's, we would be remiss not to announce that the, the passing of a family, of a family member of yours, of superintendent, interim superintendent Nelson Morris. I think at the very least that we should take a moment of silence to honor Edna Ruth Villarreal, passed away yesterday. And we're still here. We're still, you know, we're still present, but may the Lord protect her and may perpetual light shine upon her. So please join us in a moment of silence for Edna Ruth Villarreal.
Thank you so much. The only thing I can say about my, my sister, she was a tough cookie. At the end of the day, I'm saddened that she left, but in a way I'm glad because I'll be honest, the last month or two, she's been suffering quite a bit. She's out there looking for my dad, my mom, and my sister, so I'm sure she already found. At this time, let's have approval of the minutes special board meeting held on July the thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, we're going to go to the public forum. We have two requests of public forum. We have one by Alma Peña and the other one by Denise Alvina. You have four minutes in no particular order. Whoever wants to go first is fine. No particular order. Whichever you want to do is fine. Denise Alvina or Alma Peña, whoever wants to go first is fine. Any way you want to do it. You got four minutes. You can stand up. Why don't you want to stand up? That's fine. Not a problem. You can stand behind her, whatever. Remember, you do whatever you all want to do. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members. My name is Alma Peña. I am a senior at Rio Grande City High School. I'm here to talk on behalf of my classmates and myself about the fact that early college students are transferring into our school. Now, you may know about the situation or not, but we're here to talk about it today. They are doing this in order to cheat the system, to help their ranking and hurt all of us in the way with no care. This is our last semester for our ranking. They closed this semester. We have been here for the past six semesters, going into our seventh now, and they are barely entering. Now, we know that their parents work in the district and they have made it very clear that this was planned. They knew that this was always a, a backup plan in case it didn't work out in early college and they were able to use the resources that was provided by you all, all the money that you have put into early college. They used what was, was the best of the benefit of themselves and once they were done with it, they are now coming into our high school with a much higher GPA than ours. Now, knowing this, they are weaponizing the knowledge that they have been able to gain as they've been working in the school district to benefit their children. We never had to think that we had to know the rules or any policies because we know that you all have our backs, but right now we feel pretty threatened. Now, the dual and AP teachers work very differently. We know that the curriculum is the same in all high schools, but we also know from student to student that it's not the same. It's a lot more rigorous in, at Rio High and the students that are now taking the classes this week can see that clearly and it's barely the first week of school. Now, if this keeps on continuing, it sets a precedent for future classes and it's already starting. We have underclassmen that are joining and they're going to see that if our, if the twenty twenty-five class can do this, then future classes will be able to use that power. The ranking is affecting all of us and we hope that you take this into consideration as you go into item fifteen in the agenda today. I've came before saying to set a politics aside for the better of your students. I'm coming here today and if I have to again, I will come again. This is not about politics or taking sides. This is about right against wrong. This is the hard working of the current top ten percent. We have sacrificed nights, days, games, parties, so that we can get, earn, not get, earn the spots that we have right now. And for early college students to be allowed to come in with the sole reason of taking our spots is not right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Denise Alvina.
Good evening, members of the board, Board President, Superintendent of Schools, Ms. Morris. I'm here to represent my son as well as the top ten percent here, represented by these students. I'm reaching out to express my serious concerns regarding the current school board policy on student transfers and the significant impact it has on my son's ranking. My son is currently ranked number eleven at Rio Grande City High School and he's been tirelessly fighting for that tenth spot. Even though I've told him that it's okay, number eleventh grade, I'm super proud of him for his achievements. But recently, we've had information that some students are seeking transfer, again, like Alma said, cheating the system to get an advantage. My questions are, how will this recent influx of transfer students affect my son's current ranking and academic status? My son, along with his classmates, have worked diligently to achieve their current position and it is crucial for us to understand how these transfers might affect his academic standing. The news of these transfers have caused considerable anxiety and stress for my son. As he is in his final year, this situation is particularly distressing, affecting both his preparation for college and his overall well-being. I have heard concerns that some of the transfer students are children of individuals within the district who may have access to privileged information. If these concerns are accurate, it could result in an unfair advantage for these students and a compromise of the integrity of the academic environment for the current students. Given these issues, I respectfully request the following: A thorough review of the transfer process to ensure fairness and transparency, particularly, particularly concerning any potential advantages for the students with connections within the district. I also request measures to ensure that current students like my son are not adversely affected by the arrival of these transfer students. I believe that addressing these concerns is crucial for, for maintaining a positive and equitable learning environment. I would greatly appreciate the opportunity for you all to consider these, this transfer policy today. I'm speaking on behalf of my son. He's working at HEB today. He's a well-rounded student, member of the Mariachi, has been in sports, and he's not able to be here today because he's working. Besides all that, he's taken numerous AP tests, AP courses like these students, and they're highly concerned right now. We've had sleepless nights, no lunches, no dinners, because his main concern, they're, these students are driven. They've been driven since ninth grade. They had the opportunity to go to early college, but they decided to stay in Rio Grande City to be Rattlers and that's what they are. So I ask you to please consider the current policy and make sure that there's systems in place to protect our students from losing their current ranking and spot. Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you very much. Next section would be reports and information, but before I go in there, I need to make a few clarifications and I'm going to have our superintendent verify what I'm saying. TA for the last two, couple of years, the last two years precisely have, have not released any, any grades for any schools. And you have social threads, social medias that are releasing grades, but Ms. Morris, would I be correct in saying that no grades have been released for the, any schools or any school district in the last two years?
We have not had, can everybody hear me? I don't know if this is on. Yes. We have not had an academic rating as far as accountability. The last time we received an accountability rating was in twenty twenty-two, so whatever is being circulated is false. Last year, there was a judge that ordered the releases of the accountability system not to go out because it did not compare apples to apples. It was a completely different system and the assessment had changed. We were notified yesterday and I was in communication with Ms. Armalinda Ayala, who is our district person for accountability, and she reassured me today, there are no academic accountability ratings for our district nor any across the state of Texas. So I want to reiterate that, that there has been no accountability rating for twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four and we're waiting on a ruling from the judge who is overseeing this case that we, is being played out in the courts against TA, but we do not have a, an accountability rating for this year. So I don't know what is out there circulating, but I am here to tell you that the last time our district and any district in Texas received a rating was in the spring of twenty twenty-two. And I verified with Ms. Ayala today and that is true and that is fact, and we will keep the principals abreast and the community, of course, abreast if that does change.
I can only tell you that when the ratings get released, we will release them, but anything that's out there right now, like Ms. Morris is saying, is completely and totally false. With that, I will go to the next section, reports and information, report on Laura Bush Foundation grant.
Good evening, members of the board, Board President, Superintendent, the public. It is with great honor that I come here tonight to recognize La Unión Elementary. La Unión Elementary is a recipient of the Laura Bush Foundation for the Americas Library Grant and with me is Ms. Anna Lara. The Laura Bush Foundation covers anything, books and materials for our libraries. It is a small grant, but it is a, a prestigious grant. You do have to qualify in order to get it. So I'm going to read the letter that they send us that we, we can share with the public. So today, La Unión Elementary was one of two hundred schools from forty states across the country to receive a five thousand grant through the Laura Bush Foundation for Americas Libraries. This year, the Laura Bush Foundation for Americas Libraries awarded one million dollars in library grants, grants. This is a quote from, directly from Ms. Laura Bush. When a child opens a book, they open up a world of possibilities. I'm grateful this year's Laura Bush Foundation grants give librarians the opportunity to update their collections and they give students the chance to find a new genre or subject that interests them. The Laura Bush Foundation of, for Americas Libraries supports school libraries with greatest needs with the goal of encouraging our students to develop a love of reading and learning. Since its inception in two thousand and two, it has awarded twenty-two million dollars to over three thousand eight hundred schools across our country. And this year, it was La Unión Elementary from our district. So let's give her a round of applause. Thanks to Ms. Lara. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lara.
At this time, we'll proceed a report on certification of Rio Grande City Gruia Independent School District, three high schools.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Superintendent of Schools. My name is Ricardo Solis. I am the Director for Other Special Populations. On behalf of the Office of OSP and Federal Program Division and the entire school district, we want to congratulate Rio Grande City High School, Gruia High School, and a preparatory of early college for their official certification from the U.S. Department of Veteran Services and the Texas Veterans Commission and becoming a first for the GI Bill, Chapter Thirty-five for Veterans Campuses. Now, what does this entail, this certification? This certification will entail our high school, military-connected students and their families to be able to access certain benefits in regards for secondary and higher education as well. Now, this individual case, we do want to thank the principals, the counselors, and those that involve the entire board and superintendent. We want to thank all the individuals because of this certification, many of these programs that are officially out there for veterans and their children will be able to be utilized this upcoming years. So in behalf of that, we also have the Director for All Academics from the Texas Veterans Commission that will be flying down from Austin to certify all the individuals that will be certifying these students. That's going to be at the end of August and also to be able to present to the parents in the evening for all the benefits and support that they will be given as well. So this certification allows us to be one out of four districts in the entire forty-eight school districts here in Region One. So we're very proud of them. Thank you once again.
Mr. Solis, just a quick question, not a question, but I know for a fact that we had students whose house burnt down and can you just tell us a little bit of what you did and I want to congratulate you because I hear you're very instrumental in getting clothes and things of that nature. Maybe you can just give us a brief summary of what you did to help these people out there whose house burnt down.
Yes, sir. First and foremost, I want to thank the community because it was from that area that came out and just, it was just completely overwhelming, the amount of people that not only called for support, but actually gave support as well. And you know, the norm was, everybody, I just want to be anonymous, Rick. We don't want pictures with this. We don't want anything and, but we did. We started working myself and Ms. Ayesha Bassan and Ms. Diana Cantú and we, we sent out there. We got a call from Ms. Elsa Morris as well. Do what you need to do. Let's do whatever we can. Let's help out. And I got so many calls. We went out there on the weekend. We bought clothing for not only the students to get them ready, but also we provided so much books, supplies, backpack, every single thing, not only for them, but for the parents as well. I mean, they're ready to start. This individual family is going through a lot and we've, we've accepted them as well that we would honor their privacy as well, going through this very tough time, but they have expressed. We also were able to hand out some iPads with Wi-Fi's and all that stuff so we can be able to attain to the certain classes that they're going to be needing. So you know, we wanted to go out there on our behalf, myself, Ms. Ayesha, and this entire school district and the assistance that was provided from the community, Mr. Villarreal and members of the board, was just incredible. And to all those individuals, you know who you are, just thank you. You know, this individual family, the, the assistance towards them and just for the whole community, everything set aside, it was just a beautiful item to, to be a witness and a, and a part of, sir.
Mr. Solis, thank you for everything you did. I know the community, the community did a lot of good things, but thank you for your leadership. In times of crisis, it's really when it's most needed. Thank you anyway for everything you do, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, item three, we're going to have it in executive session, correct, Mr. Valtasat?
Correct.
Okay. At this time, let's go to consent agenda, approval of item one concerning to also action and approval of tax refunds for the month of July twenty twenty-four. Motion?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, let's see if we can have a motion to approve. Item two, three, and four is presented in our board packet.
Let's all move.
Second.
Second with discussion?
Second with discussion. Okay, discussion.
Item two, change order.
I have a question with that one too. Is that for the fencing that we discussed, I think, last meeting?
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Morris and the public. Change order for Gruia Middle School from Gerlach Builders is for the landscaping of the whole middle school. We're just basically asking for a change order of an increase of twelve thousand one hundred and five dollars. There is no additional cost to the district. This is already within the agreement, however, the difference will be coming of the Betterment Fund that is available. So basically, this is just to cover the landscaping of the Gruia Middle School.
Correct me wrong, we still have monies in the Betterment Fund to, in other words, it's not going to add any additional cost to the, the original project. It's, it's coming from the Betterment Fund, which we have, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Ms. Robles, did it decrease from two fifty-nine to one seventy-three?
Yes, that was the initial proposal, so some cuts had to be made and we had discussed it with administration and their final proposal was at one hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I'm sorry, can you explain what the Betterment Fund is?
The Betterment Fund is sort of a contingency fund that is added in the agreement or that is included in the agreement, just in case there are items or issues that arise like this type of thing.
What, what was, what was the total amount, the original amount in that account?
I am not familiar, I do not recall the amount, but I can get that information to you, but the balance after this change order and that Betterment Fund will be eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and six dollars.
I was just wondering how much had been spent from that?
I believe it was over two hundred thousand.
Okay.
So basically, every time you took any, any bids for any projects, you have what the contingent, it's really a contingency fund, basically, and that's for any oversights that, that come up apart or things of that nature, you take it away from that fund, correct?
Yes, bids on construction projects, yes.
But you're going to have to be careful. This is eighty-nine, we're already on the lower end of the?
Right, but I know that we're closer to the completion, so I think we're doing great. Yes.
Well, I, I'll be honest, we, I went out there and looked at the school. It, it's, it looks beautiful so far. I took a, I went by there the other day and I think the kids from La Gruia Middle School are finally going to have a, a brand new middle school, hopefully before the beginning of the next school year. It's been, I guess, since nineteen seventy-four, when I was a child, since they had a school. So I'm, I'm glad that it's finally coming to fruition. So, thank you. With that said.
I, I have a question for item four. Budget amendment, can you just explain that, Ms. Robles?
The budget amendment this time is being requested by the different campuses and departments listed on that budget amendment. They are basically just moving funds from one function to the other. The Texas Education Code does require a budget amendment approved by the board whenever we are changing functions such as from instructional to librarian services or counseling services and things like that.
Okay.
This does not affect the budget at all.
It's because I didn't see any changes. I would see like the amount and it pretty much is the same one at the bottom. So there's no changes?
No changes, only to the use of those funds.
Okay, transferred to other areas?
Yes.
Exactly. They're being transferred to the other areas and TA requires you to, to basically put that on, on file, that they're being transferred from one side to another, correct?
Yes, sir. That is right.
Ms. Robles, and I'm sorry, I already have you up there, so I was going to ask you. On the budget, we said last, well, last time we said we were at minus eight million dollars, right, deficit?
Yes.
In the budget. Where I see in the, in, in the other page, I see a million dollars coming from another, transferring from another place. Do you know where that's coming from?
Where are you looking at?
On our general fund.
Agenda item four contains all of the accounts that are, I don't see anyone there. Is there a particular number that we're referring to?
I'm sorry?
Under agenda item four?
Reports?
Are we looking at agenda item?
No, no, I'm looking at just the regular budget.
Well, right now, we're talking about budget item, we're not talking?
Oh, the actual budget booklet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do not have that information.
The item is, we're talking about a budget amendment. We're not talking about the budget.
About the budget.
I'm sure that Ms. Robles will, more than glad to explain to you whatever you need to explain, but this is not on the agenda present.
Okay, I can discuss it with you later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With all, with that said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign.
I need to abstain from number two, but I'm good with the rest.
Let the, let the record show that Noi Castillo is abstaining from item two. Other than that, everybody is voting yes, I would imagine. Correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Let's go to item five and six, motion to approve item five and six is presented in our, in our board packet with the addendum that was just given to us a little while ago.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, is that item five?
Item five and item six, and we have an addendum in item six.
I saw move, um, I saw move.
Okay, second.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Just want to note for item number five, it looks a little odd. Normally, my questions get answered from what's prepared. Ms. Becky is really good about preparing the agendas, but the CH local's missing. So I'm wondering why these requisitions are coming before us. They're all under five thousand. Mine's missing the CH local policy. There's just five items, but they look, I think the first three look really de minimis to me. They're in the two hundred dollar range. I'm wondering, I've never seen this type of item come before.
Yes, we have been presenting this for months, but let me explain to you what we're doing. Basically, board policy, CH local, which deals with purchasing, making purchases. Basically, we're asking you to overwrite that policy because under that policy, anybody that places an order without having the authorization in place, which is a purchase order, they, that person needs to become liable for that purchase. However, we understand that circumstances happen, situations happen, and emergencies happen. So basically, we're just submitting these items for your approval.
I just wanted to note, because it seems a little bit like an administrative burden for
Yes, I understand.
A two hundred dollar expense for what's clearly food for, for teachers and whatnot.
And if we do not present this to you, we would be violating your local policy.
And forgive the question, it's just that I didn't have the CH local policies. I normally read it before.
We're good. That's what we're here for.
If it's been presented, almost at every board meeting.
To, I've never seen them that small. I guess I.
On item six, I just want to say I'm happy to see janitorial supplies, HVAC supplies, electrical, plumbing supplies, even because we've, we've got concerns about, there's a desperate need in certain, certain schools and janitorial. You name it, different little departments, but I see that there's a lot of invoices for that, so happy to see that. Yes.
So that makes sense.
We have a motion on item five and six. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item seven, considering take possible action on Mariachi uniforms, the Rio Grande City High School, motion?
A motion to approve seven and eight.
Okay, seven and eight. Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Before we begin, let me make one thing perfectly clear. In the last board meeting that we had, we never said no to buying any Mariachi uniforms. In fact, we said that we needed to study this, this information and they were going to bring it back to us. I want to compliment Ms. Morris and the gentleman from the Mariachis. They did bring a report to us, but under no circumstances were, was this board ever, did this board ever say no. I can honestly say that this board in the past has always been kind to students. And what do I mean by that? Basically, last year, we bought uniforms for the whole Rio Grande City Rattler High School. We also bought two eighteen-wheelers that transports instruments last, back and forth. And there's a gentleman out there that he talked to me that their Mariachis wanted to go to Carnegie Hall and we made it possible, right, sir, for them to go to Carnegie Hall. So students, the importance of students is of the utmost importance to us. So we will always, always side for the students. And in this case, all, it's very difficult for us to make decisions when they don't bring the proper documentations to us. But never, 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 did anybody ever say no. We said, bring it back and we'll discuss it later.
Mr. Villarreal, I, I'm going to disagree. On June seventeenth, I saw the video. I wasn't here in the meeting, but I saw the video and it clearly states where it was under the five thousand, over the five thousand and you flat out took it out.
Well, ma'am, we needed information to see if we needed it. We have it right here, ma'am.
No, there was no discussion.
Ma'am, we have it right here. The information is, we cannot make blind decisions, ma'am, without getting the information.
Let's not argue. But my question is, why is it now as a separate item, yet in June and in July, it was mixed into all these others? Is there a reason for that?
Well, ma'am, again, nobody brings us any of the information to the Mariachis about Mariachi uniforms or anything we do in, in this, in this board meeting. We need reports. We need pictures. We need somebody to go look at them. It, it is our, we're top trustees. In the trustees, it says, we, we are obligated to see and do what's best for our kids. The fact of the matter is, if you look at the video, like you said, the, let me finish, ma'am. It never said, when they brought it back to us, it let's take a good look at it and see where we're going to hit. Never were we brought information, just pass it. That's not our, our job. Our job is, what we're doing right now is questioning everything and making sure that they do need it.
But there was no questions that day?
Exactly, because there were no reports.
I think the record clearly reflects that the board has unanimously approved the minutes from the last meeting, which clearly reflect that we voted to bring it back at this meeting. And I believe that was one of the very first agenda items here today.
I, I can honestly say that Jay, Jay Peña has an interesting software where he basically can put band and, and everything comes out. And he was telling me, never has anything from the band or things that were needed for our kids has ever been denied. All we're asking for them is, and that's what come, now at this time, can we have the Director of, of Fine Arts come and, and talk to us a little bit about the conditions, why we need him and things of that nature.
Well, I'm happy it got approved.
Well, it hasn't gotten approved. I just would like him to explain to us. You weren't at the last meeting, were you, sir, or were you?
Good evening, everyone. No, I was not at the last meeting.
Exactly. Thank you. Keep on. Talk to us about the Mariachi uniforms, sir.
Well, we usually replace him every five years at least and that's what we were asking for approval on, on the uniforms for Gruia and Rio since they were due.
Let me ask you a question, sir. Has, anytime you've asked for anything for the bands, for the uniforms, eighteen-wheelers, like I said earlier, or things of that nature, I think this board has been very, very good with kids and having their best interest forward. Would I, would that be an accurate statement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So do you think that Mariachis do need those uniforms?
Yes, sir, definitely.
Okay. Did you get three quotes?
Yes.
Okay, and what are we going to? Okay, and what are we gonna do with the old Mariachi uniforms, could I ask?
They will be passed on to the JV and in the middle school to the intermediate group.
How old are they, the uniforms?
Since twenty eighteen.
Are they in good conditions to be passed on, in your opinion?
Yes, we we just fix them and that's it. I mean, whatever we can salvage.
Okay, thank you.
Another thing I was gonna say, last thing is, anybody who donates anything to the Mariachas, the Rattler Bambo, the Bambooster's or the or the Quarterback Club, I'm sure you can take any money that's donated and you can find a good use to it, right, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Rodriguez, okay, so you're gonna take the uniforms you have now and give them to JV and freshman or underclassmen?
Yes.
Are, are, I'm 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 gonna ask the same question, are they in good shape? I mean, twenty eighteen, we're just five or six years, if it's thirty-two thousand dollars for these, I mean, why don't you, why don't you, why don't you bring us another quote for that? I I I just, I feel bad that we're taking.
We were gonna do that.
These need to be repaired, but we're handing them down, you know, like, be repaired, but we're handing those down. It just logically doesn't make sense to me, so, I don't know, I'm just bringing up maybe something we could look into.
The recent being is, it's it's gonna be better than what they have right now.
But still not good enough for seniors.
Yeah, why don't we do this, Ms. Rodriguez, why don't you find out, get us a quote for the other two junior highs, I guess, and and bring it back to us in the next meeting? Let's approve this today, we have a motion to approve it, and you bring back whatever you think is best for your program. And if you need to, more quotes for the next, for the junior highs, bring it back to us. But I'm sure, sir, like I said earlier, if anybody wants to donate money to the Quarterback Club, the Bambooster's, or the Baseball Club, or you all, I'm sure you're willing to take any money and use it for other things for the kids' needs.
And Ms. Rodriguez, just to clarify, I was always very clear with the parents and I told them that we were not gonna wait for the board to decide, I never said it had been removed. And that that money would go for the funding for their meals and for any extra trips and things that they would have, so that that, those funds are gonna be available for you all.
Thank you. Before we go, sir, so, can the junior highs get another quote, sir, and bring it back to us and see where we go from there?
And any, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez, and there was also several posts that other people were willing to donate, can you reach out to them as well? Because if they're willing to donate, we'll accept that money.
Okay, all of it, all of it. Let me ask you a question, sir. I remember the eighteen-wheelers, you were asking for the eighteen-wheelers, and I keep, I hate to keep harping on it. Everybody had eighteen-wheelers at Rio Grande, but we were able to provide those eighteen-wheelers. Have they been helpful to you?
Yes, sir, definitely.
And not everybody has eighteen-wheelers around, a lot of people do, but not everybody does, correct, sir?
They're better than Roma's.
Huh?
They're better than Roma's.
Well, how was that against, sir? I didn't hear you.
They're better than Roma's.
Thank you very much, sir.
Hold on, the hardest thing to read in social media is when you have former students saying, you know what, we're everywhere. Every school function, Mariachi's there playing the entertainment, and Mariachi's everywhere. You know what, that's the saddest thing to read when you're, because it's true. So that's what I'm saying, bring us back other other quotes, bring us back invoices, because if anyone deserves, you know, upgrades or uniforms or whatever, and Mariachi wins awards almost every year, not every year. So it's it's super important they need to be, know that we do appreciate and we do love and we do admire everything they do because every time we ask them, superintendents, principals, everybody, they're there, they never say no. So thanks, kudos to the directors, to you, directors, down to Mariachi, you know, the parents, because it takes time from them too, so. We know they 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 need to be recognized, a hundred percent.
Rodriguez, let's just do the right thing, bring us some quotes for the other one, and what did you just say about Roma, sir? Can you repeat that?
Our eighteen-wheelers are better, and newer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everyone.
With that said, motion to approve items seven and eight as presented?
The motions are.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries, congratulations. Let's go to the next one. At this time, let's have a motion to approve item nine, consider take possible action on early voting clerk, November twenty twenty twenty-four of Gruyá ISD School Board election, to put, instead of a superintendent, which became controversial last time, is put Sarapio Triayas, which is one of our administrators in charge of the election.
I would motion to name.
Second.
A second.
Any more discussion?
Yes, I have a discussion on that. Mr. Triayas, where, where are you?
Right here.
So you're being appointing, appointed, right?
There's a motion.
There's a motion.
There's a motion to.
To appoint him?
Yes.
Are you going to accept?
Of course. If it's approved, I will accept.
Okay, Ms. Morris, I, just to clarify, we met last week regarding this. And I disagree that the board, that the board appoints you to run or any other school employee to run the election because of all the incon, all the different things that happened in the past. And so I am requesting that the board does not approve to pass, to, for us to, um, run the election. I think that we should hire a third party or let the county deal with it. The main reason, because it cost us about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars last time we ran it. And so I think that if we're in a budget deficit, we don't have money for a lot of things, that we should be trying to save some of this money and keep it for our kids, for our staff, rather than spending it in an election that could be ran by a third party that could be cheaper or even the the county.
Let me just go one step further with that and simply put, we have a motion, it has nothing to do with it, but I think that the Roma ISD School Board, they run their own elections. The hospital board runs their own election.
Yes, sir, but we're at a deficit.
Let me finish, ma'am. The city of Rio Grande runs their election, the the city of La Gruya runs their election. The fact of the matter is that everybody independently runs their own elections. And at the end of the day, I think Rio Grande City ISD, now, we don't know for a fact that having an outside entity would be cheaper, but I have faith in Mr. Sarapio Triayas of doing a good job. And with that said, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
I still.
Aye.
Aye?
I I still wanted to discuss that.
Okay, all opposed, same sign?
Yeah, can I? No, no, yeah, I want to discuss, I want to further discuss. That you're mentioning all those places and that's great, but we're talking about our school, our deficits, the money that we need for our kids and our staff. And so I really do not think that it's something that we should be doing.
Okay.
I'll add something to it if I could just close on this. We're a sovereign entity, we have our own form of government. I don't know that anybody might, I don't know that we've ever delegated this process to any other governmental entity. I mean, we're a government just like any other. I I don't have this, I don't share this in concern.
Is there, is there additional compensation for this position, this role?
Nothing of that nature has been discussed.
Okay, I'm just curious, okay.
Okay.
That's to be determined.
Okay.
Well, how much, how much would it cost us? I mean, if we were even thinking about it, how much would it cost?
Have we ever even?
I don't, I don't, do we have a number?
There's public information, it was a hundred and fifty-five thousand on last election. Is that correct, Mr. Salinas?
I'm not sure, I can't confirm that, Dr. Barada, but what I do know is that this is, this November election has been budgeted for and set for for operations. To be determined on the hiring and the amount of employees that we have, of course, stay within budget.
Have we ever delegated to another entity? Have we ever delegated to another governmental entity?
As far as I've been here, sir, no, sir.
I, it's unheard of to me.
And do we know how much the county would charge us to run our election?
I don't have that, Mr.
Is that something that we would be looking into, getting quotes from different entities and county?
But second, do we know if the county would even accept it? And I believe today is the deadline?
But I'm not gonna delegate to another sovereign.
Go ahead.
If I may, just, we have to be very cognizant that we have to give the notice out very soon.
Right.
And so Mondays, this coming Monday, the nineteenth, is one of our deadlines, so we, the board does have to approve it today.
One of my concerns that I told Ms. Elsa
For the notice of elections.
Was that we need our staff to be available for our kids' performance, academics, extracurriculars. If we're having our staff go out there for two weeks, not present in their jobs, then are their jo, are they indispensable in their jobs? In the precision with a district? How is it that two weeks people can be out? And when they could be doing their job of academics, extracurricular activities, the kids, the, you know, performance? That was what we spoke about last week, and I think it's it's valid, it's very valid. We want our district to advance, we want our district to get better, our students, academics. And if we have our staff out worrying about running an election, I don't think we're gonna be doing a great job with our academics and performance, not to mention the 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 budget.
At the end of the day, the last thing I would say, Roma ISD runs their own elections, Escoares runs their own elections, the hospital runs their own elections, the city of Rio Grande runs their own elections, Rio Grande City IS, Gruyá ISD runs their own elections, the Gruya, city of Gruya runs their own elections. Everybody runs their own elections.
Are they at a deficit?
Don't interrupt me, ma'am. And and like Mr. Jay Peña saying, we're a sovereign entity, and I think we are in charge of our own elections, so with that said.
Okay, but they're not at a deficit that we are, so you forgot to mention that, sir.
It's a democratic process that's already budgeted for, there's nothing irregular about it, it's.
At this time, let's go to item nine, considering take possible action, okay. Item ten, consider and take possible action on item ten, eleven, and twelve as presented in our board packet.
A motion to approve as presented.
I don't think, I don't think we did nine.
Yes, correct, we did not do nine.
Okay.
You wrote item nine.
Okay, all those in fa, yeah, we did, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
I oppose.
Okay, there's one opposed, opposition. At this time, let's go to item ten, eleven, and twelve, considering take possible action. And item ten, eleven, and twelve is presented in our board packet.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
My second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor.
Yes, I have a question, is this for the new pool?
No.
Eleven?
On item eleven, what this is, is the pool, and we're close to having the pool turned over to the district by Hamlin Pool, so what we're doing is, we're look, we're investigating administratively, we can handle the maintenance with the current personnel, we're looking at storing, you know, the chlorine, the filters, that kind of thing, versus bidding out for maintenance of the pool and coming back with those numbers, seeing which is more feasible, which is more doable, if it is doable from within. And if it's not, then look at the numbers for bidding it out to maintain that pool. But I do want to be clear with the public, this pool has not been handed over to the district, so currently, Hamlin Pool is maintaining it.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Barada, I asked Dr. Salinas to just explore this option, because what I didn't want was for the pool to be handed over and does not have a plan. So I drove by there and said, hey, I just thought of something, can you help me with this? And it's just to be proactive and be ready for when the pool is turned over.
Got it, thank you.
Is this a pool, is this a pool in the front?
Yes, this is a pool that's been there for how many years? Ten, eight, how many years, Mr. Salinas, maybe you can help us out?
So we finally did.
I'm guessing, sir, twenty sixteen. I'm guessing twenty sixteen.
This board didn't propose a pool, correct, sir?
That is correct.
But we did finish it, right, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody call Channel Five, because we just don't.
Mr., I I think, Mr. Salinas, Channel Five likes to interview that pool all the time. Why don't you come and have him take a peek, Salmo, we finally finished it, okay?
On, yes, sir. On item ten, I want to be clear and put it out there, so, there, there's three, gonna be three polling sites, three voting, early voting sites?
Yes, there always has been.
The courthouse, face, and El Seniso.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, I think we had a motion and a second, correct? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, I think we're on item thirteen, do we have a motion to approve item thirteen and fourteen as presented in our board packet?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign. Now, let's get to item fifteen, we'll take that one by yourself. Motion to approve item fifteen as presented in our board packet, motion.
I saw move.
Second.
A second.
A second. Mr. Salinas, can you please tell us what we're talking about?
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you. So on the item fif, this item here, FDB Local, this is what governs our intra-district transfers. This is transfers within the district, campuses from within the district. As you can tell, it's public concern, and I want to make it clear to the public that these transfers are administrative in nature. This item does not place the board in any type of decision-making for transfers approved or not approved, so I want to make that clear to everyone. What this does is it's creating a a method, a process for the children enrolled in the early college high school. The early college high school has children that are enrolled through a Lotto system or a system that that children apply from Gruya High School, Rio Grande City High School, and end up attending at a certain number if selected. So as you can tell, the first subject area on FDB Local is the attendance area. Early college high school obviously does not have an attendance area, that would be their home campus, Gruya High School or Rio Grande City High School. So with the public concern, it it's it's forced, not forces out, that's a bad word there, but what I'm looking at is, it looked, it made us look at our local policy for transferring within the district, and what we did is, we're amending this tonight, we're asking to amend the policy, so there's a process in place for the children that are at early college high school, just as there's a process in place for the children at Gruya High School and Rio Grande City High School. And as you can see, there's several subsections there that guide this policy on what the processes are. So again, I'd like to be clear about that, that in no way does this policy put the burden on the board to approve or not to approve a transfer. That is solely administratively, but what I do want to make clear is that this policy, we, with the current events and the public concern, we're looking at our local policy to have a process in place as we do for the kids at Gruya High School and Rio Grande City High School.
Yet, the idea is to be fairing to us, correct?
Correct.
And that's the most important thing.
Yes, sir.
To do the right thing, right, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think I have some concerns on the policy, just to kind of, for clarification, because I think the purpose of the early college, right? It's 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 a, it's an early college high school, I I know it's one of the major items that actually contributes to our deficit, but in a good way, because those students do need, right, the classes that that they take there. But the reason why it does drive the the deficit is because you've got a very low student-to-teacher ratio, you've got administration there. So it almost runs like a high school with much less, a completely different high school with much less students. I think a lot of folks forget that part, right? We get compared to a lot of schools that don't have an early college. The point that I'm I'm getting is really more in the form of a question. With a low student-to-teacher ratio, without this policy, do you think we would risk the possibility of more students transferring and then eventually come into the point where, well, do we really need the early college to begin with if everybody's already transferring by year three or year four, whatever year it might be? The student-to-teacher ratio that we have right now, would we play, be placed at risk? What we're seeing, I don't know how many students are transferring, I don't know if this has happened before, it's the first times come to our attention. But, you know, I I would be concerned that of future implications.
Right, and I'm gonna answer that question, Mr. Peña, based on what we've seen in the last month, I I would say yes. I would, my answer would be yes, but I think it's important to know that when the early college was founded, or when we created the early college, the early college was a program, the children who attended early college belonged to Rio Grande City High School or Gruya High School. They were not, we didn't have a designation, a TA designation for that campus. So at that point, the children were enrolled at either Rio Grande City High School, great examples are Ace Elementary and our Ace Middle School. Those children belong to their home campuses. So you fast forward X amount of years and now you have a situation with the transfers because they have that designation.
And and if if a certain percentage transfers out, is it an automatic loss of the designation or do we keep the designation?
No.
It's, we keep it?
If I may comment, the designation is based on making sure that you have certain systems in place, so as long as they have systems in place, their ultimate goal is to try to keep the students, of course, but what we've seen in the past is that they start with a class of like maybe a hundred and fifty, a hundred and twenty-five students. This year, we picked up a hundred and twenty-five, and slowly by the time they get to senior year, like right now, we have less than a hundred students graduating from early college. Hence, the, I think their top ten percent is maybe like nine students, I think they're in the nineties, in the low nineties, but that that class or that cohort initially started at a hundred and twenty-five. So they, slowly they shift over from early college to Rio High, some go back to Gruya High. But initially, I was part of the the leadership team that wrote the designation, so the designation was written to be a school within a school. However, we got a new superintendent, new administration, and they decided it was best for them to have their own autonomy and have their own number. So when that happened, they, like Dr. Salinas mentioned, they became their own campus with their own valedictorian and their own salutatorian at the time. So what seemed like a good idea at the time is now having some adverse effects on the comprehensive high school or high schools, I should say, and, you know, that's why these individuals are here today.
Let me ask a question, Mr. Salinas, like, for example, are people like, that go to the Rio Grande City High School, I know that they take pre-AP and the people who go to the early college take dual enrollment. Are people at the early college, do they have more opportunities to take courses that give them more extra points than at Rio High School?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So the possibility of having a classroom of maybe five students to one teacher is real, and then the possibility of having to come back and discuss of possibly merging it into another high school is also real. And so I would want to avoid that, I think.
The thing that, the concern, the thing that concerns me, Mr. Peña, is basically this, you have two kids, one taking government, a pre-AP, gets nine points, correct? The government dual enrollment gets twelve points, so automatically, one, one, one school is getting more, more points than the other. They they have the opportunity of getting more points than the other ones, correct, Mr.?
Correct.
Okay.
So I have one question, but I don't know if. So I have one question, but I don't know if it would be a legal question that we would take in a closed session, but the question would be whether or not the policy would take retroactive effect.
And, and the answer is, we could take, the, the board can always make a policy become retroactive, or you can also waive the policy. And these are some different circumstances that I don't think anybody ever, ever thought about. But it, it has its, its pluses and minuses either way you go. But I can tell you that if the board decides to make it retroactive, because it's, where it's all about equity, it's unfair for some students to be able to make, I, I give the example of, of a seed or a entering class is given a hundred balloons. We give them a hundred balloons and we say, okay, you're Rio High School. Okay, Rio High School, you're gonna get a hundred darts. And you're gonna get a hundred times to try to pop the balloons. Maybe you pop ninety, maybe you pop ninety-five, maybe you pop eighty. So here I have. Then I have early college, and I tell them, oh, I'm gonna give you a hundred and twenty balloons and a hundred and twenty darts. So they go and they pop, and some of them pop a hundred and ten, a hundred and five. But there's no way that the students at Rio High School can ever pop a hundred and five, because there's only a hundred balloons. So it's, it's, it is, it's a question of equity, and we have to treat all our students equitable. So the way, and unfortunately, this is something, it was, it was a good thing when it started, but unfortunately, nobody ever thought that students would be coming back. So the question of equity is that we can't compare a hundred and twenty balloons to a hundred balloons. So there, we are gonna have to change the policy to look forward if this, if this continues. But legally, yes, we can make it retroactive. This board can.
I would like to amend my.
Okay. Can. Amended?
Can waive the policy, and, and either way, we could, we could defend it.
We could waive it. So I, I would, I would like to amend my motion.
Go ahead.
And the motion would be to approve the policies as amended, but to include a provision that it's applicable, that, that it take retroactive effect, given the discussion and given that it is a relatively new issue.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mr. Salazar, I've never heard an analogy about balloons and grains and things of that nature. That's pretty darn good. I, I'd like to go to the corner. With that said, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, let's go to item, balloons. Anyway, let's go to item sixteen. The motion to approve items sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen is presented in our board packet.
I so move.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those.
I'm sorry, again, what items were they?
Sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
I do have a question on eighteen. This is for the warehouse and the Rio High School gym drainage. Okay, is this bond money for the child nutrition warehouse?
On, on item eighteen, Dr. Barra?
Yes, it's just the engineering, right?
Yes, ma'am. So what we have is a, the, the, well, we call it the old tractor supply, the new child nutrition storage center. Ms. Ramírez has gone out for procurement and receiving large refrigerators, large equipment that requires the federal government, before they pay out this equipment, over, over a million dollars. It would require an engineer to sign off and say, this, this large storage freezer, the foundation that's currently at the old tractor supply would handle that pressure, that weight, that system. So we want to, we're recommending a, an agreement with engineering services. So this engineer could answer those questions. Obviously, he's, he's qualified and certified to do that. So that's what that is. And it's, we're looking at several phases. We're looking at walls, we're looking at ACs, we're looking at freezers, different equipment she purchased, over a million dollars from the federal.
But that's money that was assigned for that?
As far as the equipment is money that's allocated through her general fund, through Ms. Ramírez's general fund, through the hard work and dedication, through her staff that, that have brought this money in through feeding the children. So they have their own federal, federal funds.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry.
And the actual building was, was allocated through the bond.
Correct. Correct me wrong, Arcadio. If they don't spend the funds, they lose, correct?
That is correct.
And the surveys are gonna be paid by all this, this year?
So what we're looking at, Dr. Barra, is any cost that will go into the new child nutrition facility is that we're looking, as we're moving through phases, Ms. Ramírez is asking or applying to the federal government and say, is this expenditure allowed? Is this expenditure allowed? And we're trying to, for time's sake, we're trying to cover that with general fund and then re, be reimbursed by the federal government.
Okay. And my other question, for the Rio Grande High School gymnasium drainage, do we have a problem with that? I thought that had been fixed.
So what we have is a situation, Dr. Barra, that we have, I believe it's the cosmetology and welding center at Rio Grande City High School, that is correlated, is connected to the drainage at Rio Grande City High School gym. So those, that project may have an effect on the drainage to, towards the gym area. So the same engineer is on the job for Rio Grande City High School cosmetology and welding, which will then turn around and give us recommendations to solve the drainage issue at the gym due to that project.
Okay, thank you.
And I, and I'm sorry to interrupt, Ms. Morris, I know that item seventeen, we do recommend, respectfully recommend that it be tabled?
Yes, sir, because I am talking to Dr. Trevino and Mr. Trias in curriculum. Some of these dates will interfere with assessment that Ms. Ayala and her staff has for benchmarks. So I, I was recommending that we table it because I don't think that those dates might work. I don't know how the curriculum department feels, but I think that we need to better discuss this and also include my, my principals. Because it does affect them.
What item do you want to table, ma'am?
Seventeen.
Okay. So can we have a motion to approve items sixteen and eighteen and table item seventeen as presented?
Yes, sir, I think I made the motion, I'll amend, amend the motion.
Okay. There's an amendment motion to table item seventeen.
Second it as amended.
Can I have one, one question on item sixteen, Dr. Salinas? I like the, the program, the fit lit kids pilot program. I know we're getting services, our free program worth close to fifteen thousand. After that program, the first year is done, are we obligated to do anything after that? Are we, I didn't see a contract to that effect, but are we, are we obligated after the first year, after the pilot program is done?
Thank you, Ms. Ramírez, for that question. So what we have is, they're piloting this program, and of course, we benefit from it, that it's free of charge to the district, no obligation, no memo understanding, no contract. So we're taking the benefits of, of that pilot program. And our kids, so far, they've enjoyed it.
And it ends there, we don't, we're not, okay.
That's correct.
With that said, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, let's have a motion, can I have a motion to approve item nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one is presented in our board packet?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, can we have a motion to approve item twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four as presented in our board packet?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign. Some of these are grants and things of that nature. At this time, can we have a motion to approve item twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven as presented in our board packet?
So move.
Second.
I'll second with some discussion.
Okay, second with discussion. Go ahead.
On item twenty-six, there's no cost limit listed on there for the cost of the, of the travel?
This is grant, a hundred percent grant funded. It's on a reimbursement basis. I don't know if Mr. Veda is here, but I'm very familiar with the E3 grant. Do you want to come forward?
That's always nice to hear. Just like, I didn't see anything listed on there.
Yes, good evening. All of that will be through our E3 plus grant that expires in September. So if we don't use that money, it will be returned as well. So.
And the other big, what is it, thing, thing I'm, bro, big on is, who, who, how do they determine who goes? What's the, like, who determines that?
And right now, we don't have, we do, we are going on approval for amounts, and then we will be asking our principals, who is interested in attending. It's a lot of networking with different states all across the United States. So the strategies is our coaches, they will be, again, whoever wants to attend. But the numbers, we needed to approve numbers before we go out and, and.
I'm just, I'm just curious for those positions, like, this one looks like a good one, that you're gonna get, a lot of people wanting to go, and I'm curious, how does?
Well, we'll do a raffle. We always try to be, like, we draw names, we draw names, just to be fair.
That's good to know, because then you say, oh, so-and-so chose, it's come, it's on you there, so-and-so.
No, no. We always, every time we've gone and when we have certain amounts, we do a drawing.
That's equal chance, that's good.
And no cost to the district, right?
No cost to the district. Thank you.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, can I have a motion to approve item twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty as presented in our board packet?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Second. Discussion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, let's go to item thirty-one and thirty-two. Motion to approve item thirty-one and thirty-two is presented in our board packet.
So move.
So move.
Second.
Second with discussion.
Okay, second with discussion. Go ahead.
I'm gonna put Ms. Garcia on the spot. Actually, there was, it was, item thirty-one? It's, it's a good thing. I've noticed that there's camps, right, for the migrant students?
Good afternoon, everyone.
But I read that the parents can also go to their own camps, right?
Yes, we offer camps for the students and parents are invited to the student camps. And we also have a third camp, especially for parents.
And the cost that, that's mentioned, the fifteen?
It's already included, no cost for that, for the parents.
I think that's a great component of, it really is.
Ma'am, how much, just out of curiosity, I know back in, when I was a young man, my, there were a lot of migrants. The majority of my friends migrated to go work. Now, you don't hear much of that. How much, how many migrants do we have in our, in our, in our school district?
We do have a thousand two hundred students.
Wow.
And people think that there's not too many migrants, but we still have a lot of, a lot of students that migrate.
Because back in the seventies, I would say half the people migrated back then, I would imagine.
Yes, we still have, and I'm a, I was a migrant myself.
Your job is still safe.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign, motion carries. And the authority of government Texas code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, five-five-one-point-zero-eight-four, we are now going into the closed session. The time is? We are now reconvening in open session. We're going to section nine. Let's go to the first one. Item A, no, no, no action. Item B, motion.
So move, Mr. President.
Move to approve as discussed in.
As discussed in a second session, I'm sorry.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, let's go to item C.
Motion to approve as discussed in closed session.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign. Let's, let's take two, item D and E at the same time. Discussion on proposed terminations for JS and RV, motion.
Motion to approve as discussed in closed session.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign.
Mr. President, I vote aye on item D. I have to abstain on item E.
Let the record show that Eddie Ramírez is abstaining on which item?
Item E's. Item E, yes, sir.
Okay. Let's go to item F, level three grievance hearing requested by Mr. Jorge Ochoa, motion.
Motion to approve as discussed in closed session.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign. There's no action on item G, H, or I. At this time, motion for German?
So move.
Okay?